Good evening. This is the June meeting of the Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission. We are an appointed advisory board consisting of five city residents who are appointed by the Burlington City Council, and two extraterritorial members who are appointed by the county commissioners. This board makes its recommendations to the Burlington City Council. At this time, if you have a cellphone or electronic equipment, if you would mute it, silence it, much appreciated. Be advised that this meeting is being recorded. As a point of order, if you're called on, or if you want to speak, you come to the podium. Please state your name and your address for the record, so that we can get that down. Public comments are limited to three minutes. If we could have a roll call of the commission, please.
Sure. Chairman Black?
Here.
Plaisch Chair Kirkpatrick is currently absent. Member Beasley?
Here.
Member Parker?
Here.
Member Rowan?
Here.
Member Campbell is absent. Member Hill is absent. Member Wright is absent. Member, is that Nelson?
Here.
And Member Rayner?
Present.
And we have a form. Thank you. Before we begin, I would ask if all the commissioners have reviewed the agenda? Does anyone have a problem or a conflict of interest? If so, state it now. Thank you. Then we'll go to the agenda. Item number two, approval of the minutes that were held on meetings April 22nd and May 20th. Does that move? There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three, rezoning, 24-006. Mr. Dave Chima applicant to present a request to rezone property from neighborhood business to general business, limited use. The property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of South Meven Street and Chapel Hill Road, addressed as 506 Chapel Hill Road, and consistent of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 122286. Mr. Chima?
My name is Dave Chima. I have my home address, but this is just...
Home address, please.
3116 Brook Valley Court, Meven, North Carolina. Yeah, so, just like the application says, we're a gas station slash convenience store called Dave's Mini-Mark, located at the corner of Chapel Hill Road and Meven Street here in Burlington. You guys have heard of Bend City Corner, you might have stopped in for a Gatorade, or maybe to fill your tank up, or something like that. We've been in business there. I worked with my father, and we've been in business since 2005, that's when he took over there. Obviously, I wasn't that involved then on the account, I was seven years old, so... But since graduating college, I came back and started working with my dad. In recent years, I would say that when we first started, it was pretty obvious, it was more normal to see a gas station than they have a manual sign where, like, if you had to change the gas prices, you would go out there and physically change the numbers. In recent years, most of them have transitioned to digital signs, and we feel that it's our next step, and in the best interest of our business, as well as, I feel like, in the best interest of the look of the area. I think it will look better with the digital sign, and not as dated, I would say. So, yeah, we're trying to do that, and in order to do that, we need to be rezoned to a general business, because it is not, we're not able to apply for that sign as a different business.
Does anyone on the commission have a question for Mr. Chima? Mr. Parker?
Is this all that you want to do, is just change your sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from you? Does anyone on this side of the room have any questions, or they want to make any comments about this? Okay, Mr. Chima, please.
My name is Debbie Massey. I live at 1921 Downing Drive in Burlington. My husband and I own the property across the street, and a little bit down at 515 Chapel Hill Road. We have 12 acres that back off of that South Chapel Hill Road, and, you know, we're fine with going to a digital sign, but since it says that the plan is to go from a neighborhood business to a general business, limited use, I was just curious what the limited use, if the limited use strictly for a digital sign that's being approved, then we have no objection, but if it's more broad, that would open a number of other uses, other than what it's currently being used for, then we would have concerns, because somewhere down the road, you know, we have 12 acres that's residential, that potentially will be a future development for the single family, or, you know, there's some in apartments in the area of the residential. We want to keep the use compatible for a family residential area.
Yes, ma'am. Well, as part of the limited use rezoning request, the applicant has requested two uses. One, a car wash and automobile detailing or convenience store with gasoline sales. That's like two uses out of the 114.
Right, and that's what they currently do.
And that's fine, and of course, if they sell, then, you know, we have no control later down the road, but for what Mr. Chima is understanding, the only reason they're asking for this is so they're able to put in a digital sign.
Yeah, if I may, we have no intention of changing.
Okay. Are you satisfied?
Yes.
Does anyone on this side have anything to ask or say? No?
Mr. Chairman, in your example that you just gave, the conditions, the two purposes would still apply, would they not, even if they sold the lot?
Sure. Absolutely.
And maybe limited the votes to?
Absolutely. Okay. I'll ask if there are any other questions or any comments from the commission. Could we have the staff's recommendation, please?
Yes, so staff is recommending the rezoning request with option two, provided it can be repackaged on the contingency sheet. The entire area, not just this property, is located within the traditional residential due to land use designation, so it is inconsistent with that. However, we feel that there is no issue relative to the rezoning request, it falls in line with exactly the same purpose of the uses that are running currently.
Thank you. That being said, if there are no other questions from the commission, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, inconsistent with LUP, amend LUP. I make a motion to recommend approval of your request to rezone property from neighborhood business to general business, limited use. The property is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of South Meven Street and Chapel Hill Road, addressed as 506 Chapel Hill Road, and consistent of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 122286. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map in Section 4, and use of the comprehensive plan, and that calls for this area to be traditional residential, the current zoning of the property is incompatible with future land use designation of the site. The request does not change the number of allowable uses on the property, or affect the existing commercial use on the site. This action is reasonable, and in the public interest, and that the comprehensive plan encourages a sustainable balance of land uses. The request is compatible with the existing zoning and land use on the site.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Roll call of the vote, please.
Chairman Black?
Aye.
Member Beasley?
Approve.
Member Parker?
Approve.
Member Rowan?
Aye.
Member Nelson?
Approve.
Member Rayner?
Approve.
Okay. Mr. Chima, you'll be notified by a letter as to when the council will act on this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, rezoning 24-005. Ms. Caitlin Jackson applicant to present a request to rezone property from agricultural to medium industrial, limited use. The assembly of property is being located on the west side of Highway 61 in Guilford County, just south of the Guilford-Macintosh Park, and west of Homeview Road, and consisting of Guilford County tax ID numbers 106949, 106961, 106966, 106967, 106968, 106970, 106973, 106976, 106997, 225491, and 225492. Ms. Jackson.
I think Mr. Duggan is just going to speak, but Ms. Jackson is right beside me here. I'm Nathan Duggan, 400 Delaney, and greetings around, Attorney of Temple Duggans, Representative Ian. Phillips is sitting here on my left. Y'all were introduced to the last month when we were before this same board. The reason we're before you again is because we've added 23 acres to the application, so in concert, and with the assistance of planning staff, we've flipped the matter back in front of you. I want to introduce you to a couple more people who are here tonight, and I will tell you a little bit more about what's happened since we were before you last month. The Claps are here. Can y'all raise your hands? Claps, some landowners that are part of the application. The Willens are here. And then, the Ways are not here, but the Ways are the property owners, and it's highlighted there on the screen, that yellow section is the section that we're adding. The board may remember when we were before you before, that we had had a neighborhood meeting back on May 15th, which was, of course, before the first board meeting. We had 13 people attend that meeting. Lots of questions about water and sewer. Y'all may remember us talking about that before y'all last time. Estimated time of construction, types of impacts, traffic was discussed, that kind of thing. And, of course, we were before the board, and it was recommended to the city council at that meeting. Since that time, we've had a second meeting that we conducted last Tuesday, which I think was June 18th. That meeting primarily focused on the lighthouse, which is the house that sits to the north of this site. It's a preserved house, and the Rayners own that house, and I don't see the Rayners here tonight, but they were here before, if y'all remember the Rayners, and they were concerned about buffering and impact to their site. And so, we've talked, and had, the staff has had a number of conversations with Kathleen Turner, who works for Preservation North Carolina, and she was concerned, and is concerned about buffering, burm-ing, one of the topics we had in our neighborhood meeting. I'm going to try to explain this, but if you go to the far east corner of that site, there's a, you know, right there, there's a gravel road that is, that runs basically in between those properties, and they were concerned about whether or not an industrial development, as proposed by our client, would impact that road, and the answer is, it would not impact that road. So, we talked through that. They asked about burm-ing on the north side, and they also asked about where the access point would be along the frontage on 61. And of course, this is a NTDOT highway, and NTDOT will govern that. We would anticipate it would be somewhere in the middle of the site, between the yellow parcel and the corner there, and we talked through that with Mrs. Turner, and Mr. Rayner was on that call too, he was, he and his wife were on that call. So, that's where we're sitting today. The applicant is asking to, again, seek a recommendation for not just the original 173 acres, but to add the 23 acres there to the south. He's here, if y'all have questions. I know that maybe some of the folks who want to speak, and it might be easier for them to speak, and then we can get up and address their questions that they have.
Thank you. We were made aware of an email sent by Kathleen Turner, Regional Director, Preservation North Carolina. I assume you received the sign?
Yes, sir.
Jamie, would you go over how this letter really doesn't impact? If you would, please.
Sure. So, as a reminder to the board members and also to the public, their applicant's request is a limited use rezoning request, which means that they have specified particular uses as part of their application, and certain uses are not included. However, that's just related to the use. As a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board. It is your duty to make a recommendation or not in favor of the rezoning request. City Council ultimately makes the call in terms of whether or not the rezoning is approved or denied. However, you are not able to impose your conditions associated with applications in this matter. There are other types of rezonings that potentially could impose conditions, however, as part of this request, you are not. So, staff provided you with the email and the information from Miss Turner as informational, and the applicant may be able to answer some questions associated with it, may not, but it is not something that you could impose as conditions as a result of your recommendation or not for this matter.
Thank you. That being said, you did receive a copy of this?
Yes, sir.
Were there any problems that you foresaw with their recommendations?
Consistent with the conversations that we had last Tuesday with Mrs. Turner, there were a handful, there were some things we could definitely do, right? There were some things that we just, at this moment, can't commit to, because we don't know exactly who the user will be, and how they will set up on the site. One of the concerns that Mrs. Turner raised was a buffer. She wanted a buffer from the house to the property line, and it was interesting, we actually pulled, this is the application that was submitted for the property back in 1986, and one of the concerns about, in this application that was submitted that was ultimately approved, was providing a rule setting for the house, and they actually ended up adding some acreage that surrounded the house. The original application was for about an acre, and they increased that to about 1.6 acres. And I'm just going to read to the board, it says, "The new site will include the house site and 1.6 acres surrounding it, retaining a wide yard buffer to preserve its rural setting." We've also measured from the house to, basically, the other side of the road, plus the buffer that will be required by your LDO, by the UDO, which will be a whole other process, as the board knows, when the site plan is submitted, and it would be a minimum of 200 feet from the house to any kind of development on the site. Committing to a burm might be difficult, because we don't know exactly what the site's going to look like. That was a suggestion that Mrs. Turner had. I've already mentioned the location of the access point, so I think that's something we can certainly work with. So, I think, generally speaking, we've got some flexibility, but need to retain some flexibility as we go through the site process.
Thank you. Does any commission member have any questions at this time? Mr. Parker?
I may have missed it. How many acres total is this?
Yes, sir. It's 196 acres total, and when we came through before, it was 173 acres, I think, was the total, so we added roughly 23 acres.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to figure the math. The chart, or the slide, it says the new parcel is 11 acres, but I thought I understood the developer to say that it was 23.
It's 20. It's a total of 23 acres. It says 11 tracks. Yes, 11 tracks.
Tracks.
23 acres, I'm sorry. This reading, do you? Oh, yeah, totally, yeah. Oh, yeah, I see that now, yeah.
Part of the yellow is the wave property, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That was just recently?
Yeah, I did send it to our last board meeting, yes, sir.
Any other commissioners have any questions at this time?
Staff question. The addition of the extra acreage doesn't change the percentage of pervious versus impervious surface, or the water show protection during the salt.
Any others? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone on this side of the room wish to speak or ask? Michael Finney, yours?
My name is Jerry Nix. My home address is 439 Brightwood Church Road, Gibsonburg. I am a board member of Guilford County Historic Preservation Commission, and have also served as past chairman and vice chair in years past. Our commission has 107 designated properties that we have looked after for years, and the lighthouse is one of these properties. It's an 1820 federal-style brick house. It's a very important landmark for Guilford County. It was built by a German Luther. It is one of 12 brick structures built before 1840 that's still standing in the county, and it has the finest federal interior architecture in all of Guilford County. Many people don't realize that when this house and the property was sitting on, belonged to the city of Burlington. It was on the national register, it's where it places, and still is. In order to have Lake Macintosh to be built, the property had to be moved, and with the owner at Preservation North Carolina, this property was moved 1,000 feet west, so that the house could be saved. It could not go north, it could not, because of the bridge there, and going south towards another bridge, and the cost was prohibitive. But with the action of the city of Burlington, at Preservation North Carolina, doing this, this landmark was saved. Now, 39 years later, things have changed. Coming from an agricultural district to a rezoned property, that we don't know what's coming in yet. But that's not the problem. The problem is, it's just try to preserve the lighthouse, so it still has this agricultural feel, feel to it. And what has been asked was about the berms and the high-density vegetation placed around it, and moving, have the road to go up close to it, just discussing about where the road should go, and so forth. And these are all things that's in discussion, and we're not asking that much when it comes down to it. I know it's hard when you don't have a buyer to know what's going to go in there about where to place stuff, so that's why we're asking that these things be taken into consideration, including lighting. On Guilford County, some of the problems we had, they put these new lights in, and they would just shine everywhere, and get, I think it's 24 hours a day light, and so all this had to change. Had the same thing with the storage companies that was there, and it had to be changed with it at different times. So... Is that my time, sir?
Finish your sentence.
But Kathleen Turner has been talking to the Crown companies, talking about these same berms, and other items that we're trying to have. I just want everybody to know that this property exists. So many years have passed, that nobody has noticed the house is there, partner. And we're just, we're not wanting to impose anything that's not really viable for this piece of property. So, I actually, recommendation on this is to help make sure that these things and conditions are passed around.
Thank you, Mr. Nix. Where is this house on this chart?
Where do you know? You just go across the bridge. It's on the right, that last bridge, just before the rock board that's on the left.
I see. Yep.
By circling to that area, so there's a gravel road that comes along where this red line is.
So, it's the smallest property there, that little one?
Yes.
The county, Guilford County owns this parcel and this parcel surrounding property on the east side.
There's another house that has been built fairly recently that uses that gravel road that's going in there. It's really a private gravel road for that property.
Does anyone else on this side of the room wish to speak?
I wanted to ask you a couple of questions, probably more than just a statement. Craig York, I'm a council member for the town of Witsit, and I'm not really asking this...
Your address.
Oh, sorry. We're at Witsit. We've had a couple of instances where the Jordan Lake rules have come into a discussion for our planning board, and I know that this property is opposite of what we have in Witsit on the western highway. Did the Jordan Lake rules come into play in this particular property? Anything to do with that?
I know, I know I'm asking a question, but certainly, we are very familiar with the BUAA restrictions that govern this property because of its proximity to Lake Macintosh, and we work a lot with staff, trying to make sure that we're compliant with those rules. I don't know if the Jordan Lake rules, I know they've been delayed for some period of time, and I know the Triad was upset that we were preserving the triangle's water supply to our own detriment from a development standpoint, but I don't...
I think there have been a couple, three points of contention that have brought the place on.
Yeah.
It still affects the watershed and drainage into the Cape Fear River system.
Right, right.
We have property that, across the highway, was being considered, and the sale was almost completed, and the buyer pulled it because of the Jordan Lake rule.
Was that on the opposite side?
Front and truck stop.
Yeah, and I think it's because there's a restriction on petroleum sales in the watershed, and that buyer...
Well, there are truck stops in there, too.
Yeah.
But it was going to be more of a storage and camper, and I don't know if there were going to be consideration for any pollutants from the vehicles, or if it could be a...
Yeah.
You may have a point there, that's a good question.
Yeah, I think we had, we did not represent those folks, so I think we had just heard that of the ether, that that site was under contract, it's on the opposite side of 40, on the west side of 61.
And I didn't mean to ignore you guys, I'm sorry.
That's fine, we're trying to get some information.
One other question. The buffering that is around Lake Macintosh, how does that affect development as far, is it, do you have an idea of what the setback for buffering area for the actual lake park is into development?
I can answer that. It's 200 feet from the lake.
You're trying to find a consistent number.
Guilford County has it posted. There's some buffer setback, and that's state regulation. It's from, you can see on the GIS.
But what kind of spotting to play is that we have Burlington City, Burlington Department there, and they're zoning, and then it's Guilford County. We're also in the same party together, so...
Right. If you look right here, all of that parcel that's adjacent to the lake, that's all buffer, and it's non-developable.
And then by the, either the city agrees for, or Guilford County.
Or, or... All right. Is my buds are going up yet?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Last year, did you do a geological study, those records? Is there one?
We did, I think we did. It's underway.
Yeah. It's underway?
Yeah. We know there's some rock out there.
Did you guys have any questions for me, or time is fair?
You're good, Mr. York. Thank you so much.
Good.
Does anyone else on this side of the room have anything to add or question? Anyone on this side of the room? Any questions from the commission? on this side of the room? Okay. Any questions from the commission? Staff recommendation, please.
Um, staff is recommending this rezoning request, as it is consistent with the Guilford County master plan as the area, um, as an economic development area. So, included in your packet, I believe it's option number one.
That being said, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve, sorry, make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from agriculture to medium industrial limited use, MIOU. The assembly of property is being located on the west side of Highway 61 in Guilford County, just south of the Guilford-Macintosh Park, and west of Homeview Road, consisting of Guilford County tax identification numbers 106949, 106961, 106966, 106967, 106968, 106970, 106973, 106976, 106977, 225491, and 225492. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the Guilford County Comprehensive Plan, and that this area is included under the Rock Creek area, which identified the conflicts between county and city Greensboro. The request is compatible with the existing commercial and industrial uses in the area. This action is reasonable, and in the public interest, and that the Guilford County Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to be an employment center.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call.
Chair Black?
Approve.
Member Beasley?
Approve.
Member Parker?
Approve.
Member Brown?
Approve.
Member Nelson?
Opposed.
And Member Rayner.
In the interest of public information, can we hear Mrs. Nelson's reason for opposing?
There wasn't. She just had some recommendations. Can-
Can we read that into record?
I was going to ask if we could read that into the record.
I think what they're asking is discussion from Ms. Nelson.
Right.
So, she, she, I'm not sure what you're referring to, sir.
The email?
Oh, no, that's a different, uh, they're referring to check, uh, Member Nelson.
Ah.
The, the letter was from Kathleen Turner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's a bad. Was it from me? No.
Okay. And what-
There, there was not any discussion, uh, relative to specific, um, items.
Okay.
The Mr. Chairman's vote is in 42. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
42? Okay, thank you. All right. Um, we'll go to new business.
We have no new business?
Um, I will, uh, ask, I would like to have a recommendation from the board, and, uh, from someone from the board, to make a recommendation to the city council, to have Amber Wright removed from the, uh, City of Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission. As I understand it, she has never been to a meeting. And of course, I don't think we have the power to remove her. So, I would like to ask if there's a recommendation, if someone would make a recommendation, or can I? Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I move. We, uh, recommend to the city council the removal of Amber Wright from this Planning and Zoning Commission for said reason.
Okay. Does that need to be in a form of a motion? Because I'm, I'm going to go ahead and do that. I'm gonna, no, it's a recommendation.
I think it's just a recommendation.
Yeah, we're good.
As you mentioned, you don't have the ability.
Yeah, we don't have the ability to remove her with a motion. As long as we have a recommendation, thank you very much. Mr. Brown, that being said-
Mr. Mayor, is there not, I mean, that's, Chairman, is there not a vote then on the recommendation?
Well, it's, it's-
I went through, I went through the motion.
Yeah, it's just a recommendation to the city council. We don't have the power to remove.
I understand that, but is, is it a recommendation from one person or from the board?
Well, if, that's what I was asking. Let's go ahead and make a motion.
I move.
There's a motion to remove Amber Wright from the board. Is there a second?
Two seconds.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Roll call of the vote, please.
Chair Black?
Uh, aye.
Member Beasley?
Opposed.
Member Parker?
Approve.
Member Brown?
Approve.
Member Nelson?
Approve.
And Member Rayner?
Approve.
Thank you very much.
It's simply a recommendation.
Yeah. Is there anything else to come before this board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.